All right. Well, good evening, everyone, and welcome. Tonight is Monday, October 20th, 2025. This is a regular meeting of the Minnetoka City Council. I will call this meeting to order and ask you to stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Ms. Larson, would you please call roll?
Remaley.
Here.
Coquelin.
Foster Bolton.
Here.
Shaq.
Here.
Wilburn.
Here.
Calvert.
Here.
Weersum.
Here. Next item is approval of the agenda. Mr. Funk.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council members. We have no addenda for your consideration this evening, so the agenda that's been presented to you in your packet is recommended for approval. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there a motion? Councilmember Remaley.
I move to approve the minutes, or the agenda, sorry.
Thank you, no problem. Is there a second? Councilmember Calvert?
I'll second.
All right. Got a motion by Councilmember Remaley and a second by Councilmember Calvert. Ms. Larson, please call roll.
Remaley.
Yes.
Foster Bolton.
Yes.
Shaq.
Yes.
Wilburn.
Yes.
Calvert.
Yes.
Weersum.
Yes, motion carries. Next item is approval of minutes. We have one set, and that is the September 29th, 2025 Regular Meeting Minutes. Any corrections or a motion? Councilmember Remaley.
This time, I'll move to approve the minutes of September 29th, 2025.
Thank you. And a second, Councilmember Calvert?
I'll second.
All right, a motion by Councilmember Remaley and a second by Councilmember Calvert. Again, Ms. Larson, please call roll.
Remaley.
Yes.
Foster Bolton.
Yes.
Shaq.
Yes.
Wilburn.
Yes.
Calvert.
Yes.
Weersum.
Yes, motion carries. Next item is special matters, and we don't have any special matters tonight. So that brings us to reports from city manager and council members. And first, Mr. Funk.
Good, thank you, Mayor. Good evening. A couple of things for you this evening. First, in terms of some community programming, we have the upcoming book and pie sale. So it's an annual event hosted by our Minnetoka Senior Services. That is Tuesday, October 28th, from 11 o'clock to 4 o'clock in the community center. All books are a dollar. There's caverns or sloppy joes, whatever your vernacular is. I grew up in Iowa. They called me even something way different than that. But so we have loose meat sandwiches and also pies for sale. So encourage anyone to come to that event. It's always well attended, and we appreciate the community support. Also coming up is the Burwell Spooktacular. That is Friday, October 24th, from 5:00 to 7:30 p.m. That is located at the Burwell House. So always a fun event. Kelly Oday and our rec team always put on a great event for families and kids, so looking forward to that. And hopefully, we'll cross our fingers for that continued good fall weather, and we'll have a great event as well. Also, then I want to mention about our staff, and I think this was given to you perhaps in a Friday update recently. Our staff really does care about our community in so many different ways, and we have an annual charitable giving event. It's hosted by our Employees in Action Committee, EIA for short. It's an event where staff put together bundles, kind of gift bundles, and it's like a silent auction for staff only. So we have teams that put together a different assortment of items to bid on, everything from a snowplow truck ride to tickets to a sporting event, things like that. And so staff puts a lot of time and effort and donations into creating the items for sale. And as a result, staff raised $4,500 out of that event, and as staff, we contributed that this year or donated that to Sojourner. Our Minnetoka Police Department works with Sojourner. They're a women's shelter and women resources, so very proud of our efforts and for our staff really giving back to the community in that way. Two more items. One is also, one is related to solicitors. Again, I think I maybe mentioned that our last meeting, just with the storm here recently, came through the community. A lot of activity around solicitors seeking licenses to go out and door knock for roofing contractors. My neighborhood was one of those that was hit, and I can tell you, there's been lots of folks knocking on my door for roofing businesses. According to Ms. Wischnack, we had 54 companies receive solicitor applications or receive the licenses. That equals 193 approved people to be out door knocking. So if you do hear from residents about the number and volume of door knockers soliciting roofing or siding type contractors, they are out and about. We do keep a current list on our website, so those 54 companies and all of the vehicles associated with those 193 individuals are on our website. So we do track vehicles, names, and then the companies. It's all on our website. You can find that information, so point people to our website and have them go there. If anyone, I would say, as a public service announcement, if anyone sees or questions a solicitor, feel free to call City Hall. We can certainly guide them into helping them in that situation. And I would also add that not everyone that applies for license gets a license. So we go through very thorough background checks, and we flag any concerns, and we do turn people away. And then last, just want to mention that in terms of our Green Line Extension, that they are doing some test runs, and so you residents might see trains out on the tracks going up and down the line, so they are doing some testing right now. There are some videos out on the Met Council website, so anyone can go and kind of see those videos because they are recording them. I'm assuming they're using some drone technology to record some of those test runs, so they are out there and available. Still planning, from what I understand, an early 2027 open date for riders. So with that, Mayor and Council, turn it back to you.
Mayor?
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Funk. And council members, anything that you would like to report? It's been a long time since we've been together. So Councilmember Shaq.
Thank you, Mayor. Just a couple of things. I think most of us at least stopped to buy the Fire Department Open House, which was, and the weather could not have been better. The community came out in force. It was a really nice night. Appreciate all the departments for being there and everything they do to make that go off without a hitch. I will plug again the Burwell House Spooktacular because it is, I think, the best event of the year because it is literally like out of a Hallmark movie when you walk into Burwell. It's really neat. Lastly, I had the privilege to go to the La Grande Open, opening in Opus. They are in a building, and it was really, they moved from In Prairie, and it was a really cool event, and they were looking to bring somebody from the city, and they got Sampson to come by for a little bit, and he was a hit, totally the talk of the party. So that was really cool as well. I appreciate staff for accommodating that.
Thank you, Councilmember Shaq. Anyone else? Councilmember Foster Bolton?
Last, it wasn't last Wednesday, it was the Wednesday before. I went to the Hopkins West, I think it was Hopkins School, had the Ride or Walk to School Day, and I went over to Hopkins West, and they had a little table set up for the kids that walked and biked, and it was, it was really good because we were parked, or we were like right at the end of the parking lot, and so the kids came by, and you could see how dangerous it was, too. And I know that the city in Hennepin County and the parents and the school are all working toward making that safer, but it was good for me to see like, geez, you think these kids are safe when they're walking into a parking lot? And they're not. Parents come tearing out of there. But the thing that really struck me the most, though, was that, so we would stop the kids and, you know, ask their names and blah, 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 and the kids were surprised. They're like, well, why? You know, this is what I do, kind of. We had treats and stuff, and they were, you know, grateful for the treats and stuff, but they, it was like, well, this is, this is just what I do. This is, you know, and it was just such a, they're quietly influential people that don't need the recognition. I mean, what they need is a safe place to bike and walk to school. It just was, you know, they didn't need to sort of troop their own horns. They didn't even know they, you know, should have or whatever. It was, it was, it was a sweet morning.
Thank you. And others? Councilmember Calvert?
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, the Fall Festival was just, just amazing, great activities. I mean, you could build your own development from permitting to building and learn about all kinds of projects going on in the city, and kids could learn how to do CPR. So if you haven't been there, go there next year. And I was going to go to the Walk to School Day. Unfortunately, my Golden Retriever was quite ill and passed away that day, and so I just wanted to put a plug in because he was a rescue dog, and he was in a puppy mill cage for eight years of his life, and we were lucky to have him for two and a half years, and he is sort of like the Golden Retriever equivalent of Sampson, the therapy dog. So I just want to put a plug in for rescue dogs. People in Minnetoka love the breeds that they love. He just happened to be a Golden Retriever that needed a home, but I have a Pitbull Sharpe mix at home and a Chihuahua mix, and they are just, they can be wonderful, wonderful dogs. So I just wanted to put a plug in for, for rescue dogs. I also just wanted to say that I got my notice as a person who lives on Baker Road, right by Hopkins West Middle School, about, you know, they're, they're starting to get ready to build a safe trail. So there will be a north-south trail running along Baker Road on my side of the road, and if you get a notice, please open it up. They have a little thing that you have to fill out and send back in, and they have a lot of information about how it's going to work. And I'm really excited to have a safe place for everyone to walk and bike, and, you know, I see what goes on in that parking lot because I'm so close. And I totally agree that the neighbors are sort of unsung heroes, and they did just put "Do not enter" signs on the Baker Road side of the parking lot, just to make it a safer parking lot. So I appreciate all the efforts that everybody's putting into that, and I just want to thank ahead of time all of the election judges, many of whom are already busy, and our city clerk staff, because it's a busy, busy time, and I want to thank them for everything that they do, making sure that we have some of the best, best-run elections in the country. And also, I've always been so proud that we've had high voter turnout, so not so much in the off-year elections, but I just want to thank them for what they do.
Thank you, Councilmember Calvert. Is there anyone else with anything? Councilmember Remaley?
Thank you, Mayor. Just want to quick shout out to Minnetoka Police Department and also State Patrol for providing kind of excellent overseeing or, you know, just being around on Saturday during the No Kings Day event here in Minnetoka. Lots of people there, totally peaceful, as were most of the events around the country. That was also the case here, so appreciate Minnetoka Police Department being there for that. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Remaley. Anyone else? Councilmember Coquelin, welcome. How are you?
I just want to say I'm sorry I'm late. I just had a brain fart. I thought it was 6:30. I'm sorry.
Things, things, things happen, trust me. All right, yeah, don't beat yourself up on that. So a couple of things I wanted to mention, and, you know, it's been a long time since we've been together in a regular meeting, so it's nice to see everyone. Couple of things I wanted to mention. One was, there have been quite a few activities regarding Highway 7, and I was invited to a meeting, and I'm going to get the name wrong, but it was the Highway 7 Safety Coalition, and it was representatives from, of the cities that are on Highway 7, and it was law enforcement and some elected officials and some staff people. And there was a grant given to, you know, just kind of monitor things and, and pay for some things that will make Highway 7 safer. Among the things that were funded by the grant were increased patrols on Highway 7 to make sure that Highway 7, that people are driving safely on Highway 7. Then also, use of the, lack of a better term, the Cyclops for, and you've probably seen it, but it's the device that looks to check for distracted driving. I mean, there's numerous cameras, and it basically can see into cars, and if people are on their phone, it identifies that. And so, and I'm not sure what the, I'm not sure what the actions taken from that, whether it's just a letter saying you were observed or if there's more, more involved enforcement. But we had a, the first meeting of the group on that, and that will be going on for about a year, and then the funding for that was a grant, and that will be over. There's a smaller grant that will be less, that will cover fewer things. But anyway, I attended that meeting, and that was, that was worthwhile. Then, you know, I just want to mention again, the Fire Department Open House, always a hugely popular event. You keep track by how many hundreds of hot dogs the, the Fire Department gives away, and that's, you know, always a popular event, and I was, I was there. My, typically, I'm there for a lengthy period of time. Due to other obligations, I was there for a short period of time, but, but it's always a great event, and, and a lot of our supporting organizations are there exhibiting, not only the Fire Department, but all, you know, our Public Works Department was there, a lot of affiliated organizations that do work in our city and improve the quality of life in Minnetoka were there. So that was, that's a great event, and lots of kids, lots of kids, lots of families. Then the other thing I wanted to mention was the, well, there were a couple of events that I participated in. One was the, the press conference that was held at the Capitol in St. Paul regarding efforts to reduce gun violence, and specifically focused on some initiatives to eliminate assault weapons and high-capacity magazines and other particularly virulent forms of guns. And, you know, that's clearly has become a very political issue, but it's one that I believe in, and so I attended and participated in that, and I was happy to do that. And then recently, our state senator, Ann Johnson Stewart, and Patty Aikum, held a town hall meeting, basically, on gun violence, and they asked me to be the moderator. And I think that a lot of the, as I mentioned at the meeting, a lot of the proponents of these changes, it's gotten very partisan. It's an issue, in my view, that shouldn't be partisan, but it is partisan. And so there are a lot more Democrats at this thing than there are Republicans, and I made the comment that, well, I'd like to think that they asked me to moderate this because they thought I'd do a great job, but in reality, I recognize they asked me to be there because I'm not, because I'm not a Democrat. I'm, I'm an independent, and I think having that voice was important. And that was well attended, and I think that the topics covered were, were important. And I think it's, you know, it's unfortunate that something that should be so common sense is so divisive and so politically polarized, but, but I was there and I wanted to support that effort, and so I wanted to explain that or mention that. And then the other thing was, I was host, I was a speaker along with two other mayors, Mayor Labaty, excuse me, of Shorewood, and Mayor Ringgate of Excelsior, and we were a mayor's panel at the Excelsior Rotary this past week. So those are a few things, and there's a few things that I've been up to lately. So anyway, with that, seeing no more, no further reports from council members, the next item on the agenda is wishing, citizens wishing to discuss matters not on the agenda. And so this is an open mic, mic opportunity, and if you have something that you would like the council to know, please come forward, state your name and address, tell us what you want us to know, and we will listen, and we will take no action on that tonight, but we will turn it over to staff for subsequent follow-up with you, and then a report back to the council at a later date. So if there's someone who would like to come forward and share something that's not on the agenda, please state your name and address and let us know what you have to say. Good evening.
Good evening. Councilmember and Mayor, Kevin Ringhofer, 2200 Indian Road West, is where I live. Anything else I need to say?
Was that? But that's good. That's good.
I'm actually here to report of a pending deportation of a Minnetoka resident and member of the Mills Community. After being here almost 10 years, most of the time spent in Minnesota, and most of the time spent in Minnetoka and being a part of the Mills Community, they are having their work visa revoked. They were in the process of filing for a green card, and were not only denied the green card, but told that their work visa would be, would be revoked. So, and I won't get into the details of why the work visa was being revoked, but it was really probably an Immigration Department issue of not kind of following through. Filed several appeals, primarily because of the, the immigration's fault of not getting, not kind of renewing his work permit in a timely manner, was given, and was basically told that, you know, that was going to be denied, and he had, they had a choice of either leaving voluntarily or forcibly being removed. They have chosen to leave voluntarily, and part of the reason were that they were told if they didn't leave voluntarily and were forcibly removed, that that would, they would be banned from coming back to the United States for the next 10 years, and not only the United States, but several other countries which kind of follow the United States guidelines of being banned. So that's the situation. I don't know of other deportations that have been reported, or if there are other deportations reported in Minnetoka, but this is, this is the first one that I'm aware. We are also aware in our community of several others who are in precarious positions as well. And again, difficulties kind of in following through when people follow through with appeals, they seem like they're just basically kind of ignored. So with that, I just wanted to make you and the staff and the residents of Minnetoka aware that this is happening, and I would be willing to talk offline with anyone who would have some ideas of what we could do for advocacy, or maybe if there's advocacy that the city can do on behalf of its, of its residents.
Thank you, Mr. Ringhofer. Thank you for sharing. Is there anyone else? Good evening.
Good evening. Thank you, City Council and all members, City Attorney. My name's Riley Yearigan, 4505 Saddlewood Drive here in Minnetoka. New resident to Minnetoka. I moved here a little over a year ago. In August, there was No Kings Rally here in town, and I was standing on the corner of Highway 7, and I was assaulted by a young girl with a stick. She hit me in the back of the neck. Hurt, I felt fearful. I called Minnetoka Police Department. They quickly responded. The young girl admitted to striking me in the back of the head with a stick while at the rally. She didn't like the sign I was holding. She fled the scene. I walked behind her as she left. She saw I was there, removed her shoes, and started running away, obviously an admission of guilt. I was actually in my workout clothes, so I was very easily to pursue her, maintained a couple hundred yards behind her while I was on the call with 911. Like I said, the cops arrived, and the young girl kind of was mocking the whole situation, didn't think it was a very big deal. Finally, the cops told her, you know, you're going to be in trouble. Tears came from her eyes, and it was obvious that she regretted her actions. The cop pushed me to have a conversation with him and the father of the daughter, asked me not to pursue charges. After carefully thinking about it, I decided that I thought this was a great learning opportunity for this young girl to realize that political violence has no place in our state or our city. After the cop and the father, the father agreed. He said, "This is unacceptable, and I agree, something needs to be done here." The cop, however, tried to pursue me not to press these charges. I was very clear, I would like to see something happen with this, and that's why I was so disturbed to later receive the police report that said the cop was unable to determine that a crime was committed. I went to the chiropractor, had x-rays done, had visual, he told me I had obvious signs of whiplash. I could hardly move my head to the left or the right, up or down. And I guess, my question is, is political violence legal in Minnetoka? And then are the police, law enforcement, judge, and jury? So really, I'm not trying to throw the book at this young girl, but like, if we're going to allow that kind of behavior, then we can't be upset when some of the other terrible things that have happened due to political violence lately in our state. And Ms. Paula here, she had thanked everybody for not having any issues at the No Kings Rally. And if these crimes go unreported, we can celebrate no crimes. But I'll tell you, in August, that night when I got struck in the back of the neck, I didn't feel like I was safe. I certainly didn't feel like my tax dollars were serving me. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Is there anyone else who has something to report to the council tonight? Anyone? All right, seeing no one, we will move on. So next item is bids and purchases, and item 9A is approval of a cybersecurity insurance coverage. And I believe, Ms. Doman, that is your report.
Thank you, Mayor. We'll see if this works. It's not working. Tonight, we'll be talking about approval of cybersecurity insurance coverage. The staff recommendation this evening is to motion to accept the cybersecurity insurance quote from AIG totaling $49,886, and then four votes are needed to pass this item. Again, financial considerations, there is an annual cost of $49,986, and the cybersecurity policy will be funded through the city's insurance trust fund. A little background, so October is Cybersecurity Awareness Month, so we are doing lots of things around City Hall to train employees, phishing simulations, lots of education happening this month. Cyber attacks are the largest digital threat local governments can experience and beyond local government as well, due to the bad actors trying to infiltrate the city's network in order to realize financial gain, disrupt operations, and/or to alter, destroy data. Cyber attacks are typically launched using methods like malware, phishing, and ransomware. Again, city staff receive regular training for cybersecurity best practices, including phishing simulations. And those phishing simulations, I often question if they're phishing simulations or a real email because they are so tricky. And so we do lots of things around City Hall. We train our employees, and yet, this, this is a really big topic. I was with a lot of assistant city managers recently, and I think 90% of us said, what's, what do you lose sleep over at night? And it's cybersecurity because it is such a forefront of everyone's minds, particularly lately. So some background, so the city currently has cybersecurity insurance through the League of Minnesota Insurance Trust Fund with a maximum coverage of $500,000 per incident. However, it is $500,000 per incident, but when it's a phishing attack, the max is only $50,000. That was a change in 2023 that was made in the insurance trust due to the increasing number of attacks on cities. Market data and recent cyber attacks, example, the city of St. Paul's was one of the most recent, show average losses exceeding this coverage amount. So to supplement the existing policy to maximize risks and minimize risks, city staff partnered with NFP, who's our insurance broker for health insurance, so they're our insurance broker, to solicit addition- So they're our insurance broker, to solicit additional coverage options. So we received three quotes that, we received a few more, but these were the three that came recommended by the insurance broker. So AIG at $49,986, TMHCC with $60,000 and Coalition at $90,000 annually. AIG proposal includes $5 million in incidental coverage plus complimentary services. So not only was it the cheapest, it provided a lot of supplementary compliments that were very beneficial that we found on our end. So some of those include employee cybersecurity training. Again, we're doing that, but this is additional cybersecurity training in a little bit of different ways. So we're able to accommodate how different individuals learn in the city. Security assessments, vulnerability scanning, incident response support, which is critical when an incident does happen. And then of course, public relations and legal consulting. And legal consulting, those dollars can add up really quickly. So these additional five areas of complimentary services were welcomed by us. So adding AIG coverage enhances protection against financial losses and provides access to critical tools and experts in the event of a cyber attack. And hopefully, we don't experience this. And if we do, we do have extra coverage in place to assist us. So staff recommendation tonight is a motion to accept the cybersecurity insurance quote from AIG totaling, again, $49,986 annually. And again, four votes are needed. And I'm happy to stand for any questions. Thank you, mayor.
Thank you, Ms. Doman. And I would turn my fellow councilmembers and are there any questions for Ms. Doman on this item? Councilmember Romaili.
I don't have any questions. I just wanted to, Mike and I, Mr. Funk and I spoke about this this morning and I had, you know, several comments and questions at that point. I think you answered them well. Just one comment would be that, you know, this is happening, as you said, with increasing regularity. And it's, it's a big issue that can run into the millions of dollars. Councilmember Calvert has just experienced this in her role at St. Paul. So I really appreciated staff taking the time to kind of go through this tonight.
Anyone else with questions? Yeah, go ahead. Councilmember Foster Bolton.
So can you talk a little bit about, Mr. Funk, about the funds that are already in insurance? We talked about this. Can you explain that a little more?
Yeah, thank you. Mayor, councilmember Foster Bolton, as noted by Ms. Doman in her report and also contained in the staff report, how we would pay for the premium. I assume that's what you're alluding to. So the quote is just shy of $50,000. We have what's called an insurance fund here at the city and it's, it's really an accounting function. Mr., yeah, Mr. Nelson is here so he can fill in where I, if I state something incorrectly. But how, how we fund insurance in the city is each department. So through our budgeting process, each department has basically an insurance line item. So whether that's the police department, Public Works, the Attorney's Office. And so we have, each department has insurance costs. And so there's a formula that our finance team uses to determine with our premiums how much each department should pay towards insurance. And later on your consent agenda, you do have an item that approves insurance next year for general liability and other coverages. So those costs are then allocated to each department. Each, then there's an accounting function that occurs. So then each department contributes or that money is drawn out of those general fund departmental budgets and put into a special insurance fund that's been phrased here this evening. And so this premium being proposed this evening would be paid for out of that insurance fund. That fund carries a separate balance. It's like a separate, if you will, checking account for the city. And so what we pay out of that is not only the insurance premiums, but any sorts of deductibles. So the city with our, with our insurance, and I'll put this in terms of like homeowners insurance or car insurance. So anyone that has a house or car, you have insurance and you pay deductibles. And so we too, as a city, have deductibles on any of our claims. Our deductibles are higher than what you'd normally pay at your house for homeowners insurance or car insurance. Our deductible, I believe it's $25,000 per occurrence or $150,000 aggregate. So just to give an example, if there is a vehicle damaged, one of the city's fleet vehicles, and I'll not to pick on police, but I'll pick on police, for example. If there's a, if there's a squad car damaged, for example, and it doesn't meet that $25,000 deductible, the city then pays out-of-pocket costs for those repairs. So if there's a $10,000 cost to that squad car, that comes out of that same insurance fund. So we do budget for and then carry balances in that insurance fund for premiums and for any out-of-pocket costs, like an example I just mentioned. We do have in our fund balance, adequate fund balance for this $50,000 expenditure. That again, would need to be revisited for the 2027 budget as we evaluate our insurance packages every year. But we, where fund balance is good for 25 and 26, or excuse me, for 26.
Are there any other questions, council? Sorry, I have one. So, you know, a premium of $50,000 is not insignificant. At the same time, five, you know, the $5 million per, $5 million feels like quite a bit of coverage. But do we have a sense for what cities, other cities our size take? And did our broker have a sense for, okay, I recommend $5 million for this reason? Do we feel that it's sufficient? Because I do think the risk is not small. So any sense for that?
Thank you, mayor. Good question. You know, that when we look around, I think the city of mayor had a claim a couple of years ago for $430,000. We've obviously had a situation a few years ago again for 1.5. I think it varies. I think the broker felt comfortable at $5 million. However, we do know it's going to exceed $5 million. And so ensuring that we do have the $5 million, also in the most recent CIP conversation, we are starting to put away a few dollars every year in the CIP for some cybersecurity cushion as well. And so I think between the two, I'm hoping we're setting ourselves up for a really good position if or when this may happen.
Very good. Thanks for that answer. So council, we're done asking questions. Comments or a motion? Councilmember Calvert.
Thank you, mayor. As one of my colleagues mentioned, my day job is at the city of St. Paul and we did experience a cybersecurity incident in July. And I will say that we are well into October and we're still digging out. And it's really, when you have something like that happen, especially when it's the capital city, it's, it's quite difficult to sort of calculate the actual cost. So to me, I would say it's, it's not an insignificant number, but the coverage is substantial. And I am 1,000% for making sure that we are investing in our cybersecurity here in Minnetonka because every penny will be well-spent. And I know that there are, you know, simulated phishing expeditions and all of that. So and, and we can use it too. So make sure staff sending it to us because I have a feeling that people like city council members and commissioners might be the worst offenders. And, you know, Mayor Weersum's always messaging me with spoofed, with spoofed emails that I know are not from him because he just wouldn't write like that. So anyway, but I just, I just think this is so important. So I really appreciate the explanation of sort of how the funding's working and what we get for, for what we're investing.
Any other comments, council? Or a motion? We can, we can do a motion. Councilmember Foster Bolton.
I'll make the motion to accept the cybersecurity insurance quote from AIG totaling $49,986.
And Councilmember Wilburn.
I will second.
All right, we've got a motion by Councilmember Foster Bolton and a second by Councilmember Wilburn. Ms. Larson, please call roll.
Romaili.
Yes.
Coakley.
Yes.
Foster Bolton.
Yes.
Shaq.
Yes.
Wilburn.
Yes.
Calvert.
Yes.
Weersum.
Yes, motion carries. Next item is the consent agenda. And the consent agenda items are items that are typically routine. And the way it is done is they will each be read into the record. And if anyone, either on the council or in the audience, would like to pull an item, please indicate that. Then we will vote on the items that have not been pulled. And then we will circle back and cover any issues that have been pulled and vote on those individually. So I will read these items into the, into the record. Item 10A is a resolution to adjust 2026 non-union employee benefits. Item 10B is the 2026 union employees' wages and insurance adjustments. Items 10C is 2026 general liability insurance and workers' compensation renewals. Item 10D is a resolution approving the change of the electronic citation software solution and support services. And item 10E is a resolution providing for the insurance, for the issuance, excuse me, for the issuance, I've been talking a lot of insurance tonight. So the issuance and sale of $10 million of general obligation utility revenue bonds, series 2025B. So before proceeding, would anyone like to pull any of these items? Councilmember Calvert.
I just want, I'd like to pull 10C just for a comment.
Okay, very good. Anyone else or any other items? Councilmember Romaili.
Yes, I think, I think it's 10B that I would like to pull. I think that's the one. I've got my notes here and I'm digging for them. Is that correct, the ones I sent? No, A, I'm sorry.
Okay. All right, 10A.
Looking for my email.
Anyone else? All right, so we've got, we're, Councilmember Romaili is going to pull item 10A and Councilmember Calvert is going to pull item 10D. So that leaves us with items 10B, C and E. Would somebody like to make a motion on those items? Councilmember Calvert.
Thank you, mayor. I'd like to make a motion approving consent agenda items 10B, 10D and 10E.
Or 10C and 10E.
I'm making comment on 10C.
Okay, very good. Okay, my mistake on that one, excuse me. I made an error there. So yes, so you, your motion is 10A, excuse me, 10B, 10D and 10E. Yes, excuse me, I think I stated that incorrectly the first time around. So my mistake. And Councilmember Coakley.
I'll second.
All right, we've got a motion and a second. Ms. Larson, please call roll.
Romaili.
Yes.
Coakley.
Yes.
Foster Bolton.
Yes.
Shaq.
Yes.
Wilburn.
Yes.
Calvert.
Yes.
Weersum.
Yes, motion carries. And then going back, we will take these in order. So item 10A, resolution to adjust 2026 non-union employee benefits. Councilmember Romaili.
Yes, thank you, mayor. Mr. Funk and I discussed some questions that then I then forwarded or put down in email form today. And I think the first one that we're forwarded, was forwarded to staff, was in terms of salary ranges and increases, the cola in the market. Just understanding a little bit more how Minnetonka's benchmarking compared to our peer cities for salary and benefits for comparable employee categories. I think we went over this a little bit during study session, but if you could just refresh a little bit on that, that would be helpful.
Yeah, thank you, mayor and Councilmember Romaili. Tonight on the agenda, we only had the non-union benefits. We did have the union salaries on as well, which is much different than the non-union. The non-union salaries will come forward on the December meeting when we do the budget. The south, the union employees, how we get to their salaries is very prescribed. And they sit at the 50 percentile of peer cities.
Okay, great. Thank you for clarifying that. Then in terms of the insurance and cost share, just so I'm understanding, I think we went over this, Mike, I just wanted to confirm that the employer-employee split on premiums is 70/30. Is that approximately correct?
Thank you, mayor and Councilmember Romaili.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I did put together a few slides tonight. Mike had shared Councilmember Romaili's email. So if you don't mind, I might walk you through those. I think that will help answer some of your questions.
Okay, great. Thank you, thank you.
It's complex. Yeah, so we do benefits is complex. So I did put together a few slides this evening to help address hopefully some of these. We have a cafeteria plan that offers four tiers of options and an opt-out option. And so when we have a premium increase, we do split that premium cost 50/50 to begin with. And then we look at our comparable cities. And then we determine, are we above or below the average? And how close to our peer cities' premium contributions are we? So tonight this evening, the resolution is to adjust the 2026 non-union employee benefits. There are four votes needed for this. And I'm going to walk you through a little bit. Hopefully, this helps answer many of your questions, Romaili. Right here, you'll see our grid. This spreadsheet is about 70 cells wide. I had our benefits specialist in HR try to condense it for me so I could be able to explain it this evening. You'll see there the 2026 contributions. Those are what are being approved this evening through the council. You will see in the next to it, the average percent of premium paid by the city. What you'll notice there is the city is paying 125.8 of the employee premiums. And then it decreases, increases, decreases from there. And so Romaili, you have, Councilmember Romaili, you had asked about that 50/50 split. That is true when it comes to the premium increases. We do split that between our union employees and our non-union employees 50/50. However, when this was originally built, this was the structure it was built within. So we first stick that, this year it's 4.4% into the calculations. And then we go to the next column, which is the average percent of medical premiums paid by comparable cities. What we learned is that we were above market, above our market of our peers with our employee-only plan. We were significantly below on our employee plus spouse. This is updated, I think it was like 70% when we ran the numbers. So what we do then is we keep the same dollar amount. And we, so for employee only, they only received $33 of a difference from 2025 to 2026 because they're significantly above our peers. We took those extras and we gave them to the employee plus spouse, which they received an increase of $157. So we keep it within the same dollar amount and that 4.4. We do move within the categories to help offset where are we getting, where are we compared to our markets? We try really close to keep within our comparable cities on our premiums. You'll see how many employees are enrolled in each of our plans. You will notice our, our family is quite low. Our employee plus children is quite low. Employee plus spouse is the lowest. And so again, looking at those numbers, I'm employee plus spouse. That hopefully increasing it a little bit will help make that more tractable to our employees as a plan option. Then you will see, I think, Councilmember Romaili, one of your questions was, what is the total cost to the city? And it is that $5,188,152 is the total cost. So when we come to council during the budget meetings, so I pulled this right out of the budget book. It is that you will see the health insurance, there's a cost difference from 2024 to 2025 at $480,000, or 25, 26, I'm sorry, $480,000, which is 0.9% of that 7.892% budget increase. So I hope that answers some of your questions and provides some clarity when it comes to the insurance. It's a very complex, lots of spreadsheets, lots of data. We have a full-time employee who's, who immerses herself in this and spends a lot of time in it. So I hope, I hope that provides some answers. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Thanks so much.
Thank you, Ms. Doman. It is complex, no question. So thank you for that explanation. Are there any other questions or otherwise? Councilmember Romaili, if you'd like to make the motion.
Thank you, mayor. I will make the motion to adjust 2026 non-union employee benefits.
And a second, Councilmember Calvert.
I'll second.
All right, we've got a motion from Councilmember Romaili and a second by Councilmember Calvert. Ms. Larson, please call roll.
Romaili.
Yes.
Coakley.
Yes.
Foster Bolton.
Yes.
Shaq.
Yes.
Wilburn.
Yes.
Calvert.
Yes.
Weersum.
Yes, motion carries. And then item 10C, if I have this correct, is the 2026 general liability insurance and workers' compensation renewals. Councilmember Calvert.
Thank you, mayor. I just want to make, ooh, I opened the wrong one.
I know how that goes.
I talked to Mr. Funk this morning about workers' compensation. And it is also a very complex formula. I was trying to understand some of the lingo and... I was trying to understand some of the lingo and things like mod factor and the amounts, even though our mod factor went up, the, the premium went down. And I also talked to Mr. Funk about, you know, some, about a year ago, I think, we hired a wellness and safety coordinator, and so this is, you know, they just, just started this year, and I just wanted to mention that I think, you know, it's too early to see how it, how it affected basically our quote-unquote score here, but I think it's something worthwhile to look at closely next year to see if the cost benefit works out, which, which I hope it does, and I know that we had, you know, we had some really significant, you know, one really significant accident that really contributed to our mod factor, but that it's going to apparently roll off in one more year, two more years, one more? So, anyway, eventually that'll drop off and hopefully it'll help our score and bring our premiums down. So it was a worthwhile conversation. I just wanted to mention that this too is a really complex formula, and I just appreciated the explanation from Mr. Funk.
Thank you, Councilmember Calvert. Is there anyone else who wants to comment on this item? All right, oh, Mr. Funk, did you have something?
Well, yeah, thank you, Mayor, not to, thank you for the time. Just to add to Councilmember Calvert, excuse me, Calvert's comments, first, I just want to take a step back and for Ms., Councilmember Rel, Romailly, Ms. Romailly's comments, sorry, regarding just compensation as it relates to union and non-union employees, I just want to reiterate what Ms. Doman mentioned in terms of, we have just different classifications of employees. So we have our non-union, and I'm saying this for the public record, so everyone's aware that we have non-union employees here at this city that represent less than 50% of our entire workforce. We have the other remaining members of our staff in a union, and we have four unions, as you know. So tonight's action again was more focused on compensation increases for the union employees. We do have, as Ms. Doman mentioned, very prescriptive language in our union contracts, and it's all formula-based, and so it's, it's good in many ways for the city where, unlike other cities where it's not as prescriptive, we can get into a lot of negotiations back and forth on, on union or compensation for union employees. That's not the case here, so we're very prescriptive. It's formula-based in the sense that we rely on data from our 10 comparable cities, and through this formula, it really determines then the pay that's noted in the resolution that you're, you're adopting. And then when it comes to the non-union staff, that, as Ms. Doman mentioned, is coming forward to the council yet. That too has, I think to further answer your question, Councilmember Romailly, you'll, when that time, when that comes forward to the council, we'll talk to you or explain to you more detail about our compensation study that we did, and then how we positioning our non-union employees within the marketplace. So I think there's even more detail coming on how that's calculated at our upcoming meeting. And then just, just to again reiterate what Councilmember Calvert and I talked about earlier today, really regarding the position that we, that we hired here, was actually authorized two, two years ago. They've been with us now for about a year, and so we just, at this point, don't have a lot of history in terms of really taking a look at what is the impact of that position and that relates to our insurance premiums. Because if you rewind the clock a couple of years ago, part of the rationale, or the rationale for adding staff, a staff member or investing in a staff member was to really try to curtail our exposure and our expenditures regarding workers' comp premiums and health insurance premiums. Going from 2024 to 2025, our workers' comp insurance premiums went up $400,000. That was a significant budget driver going into this year's budget. So rewind the clock, a year ago, that was a significant cost increase. And so we're happy to report today that even though our mod factor went up a little bit, our overall insurance premium went down. And so what we want to be able to point to as Councilmember Calvert is noting is how attributable is that to the work we're doing with our, with our employee? Ms. Doman can speak more to it, because she supervises HR and, and supervises the work of this employee, but one of the things that they're doing in our safety aspect is really increasing our employee engagement in terms of our safety program here at the city. It's really what I would call in not, in beefed up, if you will, it's kind of a beefed up effort where we do have a safety committee, they meet more regularly, they're, they're reviewing all of our safety claims, looking at accident reports, and really making sure that not only our, really making sure our employees are safe and they're going home safely, but most importantly, also from a fiscal perspective, really trying to influence and bring down that mod factor, bring down our insurance premiums. That's happened. From a, from a safety, or excuse me, from a wellness perspective, that too, I think we're seeing positive movement in. I know tonight, we, we've been talking about an 8.8% increase in health insurance, while we try not to take a victory lap on that, because it's still 8.8%, many organizations are seeing double-digit increases. Like to think that's a reflection of the work that we're doing with our wellness coordinator, and this position is very instrumental in working with our, our wellness committee. We have an internal committee that works at our wellness programming. So what they do is they work with our insurance broker that Ms. Doman spoke about, NFP. They provide to us reports on what our insurance drivers are, what's causing employees to go to the doctor. And so we have a better handle on what those drivers are, and then really try to tailor and tailor our wellness program, so we're really driving home what those, what those events are, so we can address those through our programming, which ultimately will hopefully lead to healthier employees, and then also driving down our insurance premiums. So, long story short, more to come on that. I just want to just re, really reiterate the effort that our, this position's bringing to the city, and I think we're starting to see some of that, and hopefully we'll have more of a full report after we get another year of that work being done in 2025 and into '26. So thank you for that time, Mayor and Council.
Great, thank you, Mr. Funk. Any other, any other comments from council? I have a quick one, but I want to make sure if anyone has comment they'd like to make it. Seeing none, I will, I just want to add to a little bit more context on this item, because we're, we're talking about something that, we're talking about mod factor, and I'm sure anybody in the public, what's a mod factor? And, and I'm not, I don't have a good explanation, but it's a rating that kind of indicates where you are relative to other organizations like ours. And our mod factor did go up, and so when it goes up, that means our insurance is going to cost more. However, our mod factor is below 1.0, and a 1.0 mod factor is the norm. So while our insurance is going, the mod factor that will impact future rates is, has increased, it's still below the norm, and I think that perspective is necessary, because otherwise say, well, it's going up, what are we doing wrong? Well, in reality, insurance and your, I mean, you know, you like to be able to say, well, it's a controllable, and if we can work hard through the employee we've hired to keep everybody healthy and keep everyone safe, but as we all know, we can't control our health. We, there are things that we can do to improve our health, but if, if we could control it, no one would get sick, there'd, there'd be no disease, we'd be in a great spot. That's not the way the real world works, and so I'm pleased that our efforts, we're still below the norm by not an insignificant amount, by about 10%. We want to, we don't want it to keep going, we don't want it to go up more, but relative to comparable cities and other organizations, we are, we are below the norm, and I think it's important to, to share that information. So, Councilmember Calvert?
Thank you, Mayor, and here, here, so.
All right.
Those are, those are excellent comments. So with that, I'd like to move approval of consent agenda item 10C.
Thank you. Is there a second? Councilmember Shaq?
I'll second.
All right, we've got a motion by Councilmember Calvert and a second by Councilmember Shaq. Ms. Larson, please call roll.
Romailly?
Yes.
Coakley?
Yes.
Foster Bolton?
Yes.
Shaq?
Yes.
Wilburn?
Yes.
Calvert?
Yes.
We're some.
Yes, motion carries. Item 11 is consent agenda items that require five votes. We have one of those tonight, and that is the Minnesota Historical and Cultural Heritage Grant Agreement. So we'll take a motion on that unless somebody wants to pull it, but if, seeing, Councilmember Wilburn?
And I always feel like I have to say it, but I do appreciate when staff is able to secure grants to help with the budget. So thanks to Mr. Alexander and his staff on their, on their work with, with securing this grant. And I will make the motion to approve consent agenda item 11A.
And a second, Councilmember Calvert?
Thank you, and I, I also appreciate Councilmember Wilburn's comments, and I second.
All right. We've got a motion by Councilmember Wilburn and a second by Councilmember Calvert. Ms. Larson, please call roll.
Romailly?
Yes.
Coakley?
Yes.
Foster Bolton?
Yes.
Shaq?
Yes.
Wilburn?
Yes.
Calvert?
Yes.
We're some.
Yes, motion carries. Item 12 is introduction of ordinances, and we have none of those tonight. Item 13 is public hearings, and 13A is a temporary on-sale liquor license for the Rotary Club of Minnetoka Foundation for a fundraising event at 15,000 Minnetoka Boulevard, which I believe is the Marsh. Ms. Wischnack?
Thank you, Mayor and councilmembers. This is an event at the Marsh. The event is scheduled for Saturday, November 8th. It is a fundraising event, and the Rotary is hosting the liquor license for that event. We've had various partnerships with the Rotary over the years in terms of Summer Fest, they also do a private event called Links and Libations, so we typically don't have any challenges with issuing these temporary licenses to the Rotary Club. We'd, we'd hope that they all come in at once, and then you just have one public hearing, but we haven't mastered that yet. We'll work on that for next year. We do recommend approval of the temporary license. Just so you know, they do receive our card reader, our ID reader from the city. We give that out to nonprofit organizations to help with managing over 21 compliance. So with that, Mayor, I'll turn it back to you and the council. Thank you.
Thank you. Council, any questions for staff? I'm not seeing any. This is, this is a public hearing item, so I don't know if there's anyone from the Rotary Club would like to come forward. If so, please, I will open this public hearing and come forward, state your name and address, tell us about this very nice event. I've attended it in the past, and I'd recommend it to other people, and please tell us what you want us to know.
Yeah, we would certainly recommend, everybody. I admit that I'm not a member of, or excuse me, a citizen of the city of Minnetoka, but I am a member about the past six years of the Minnetoka Rotary Club, which is the sponsoring entity for the Minnetoka Rotary Foundation, which is the applicant for this, for this license. We were invited by the Marsh this year to host the, the serving of the liquor at an event that they are sponsoring on November 8th, which is sort of the fall festival for them. As staff has recommended, or as staff has noted earlier this year, we do have some experience in that in conducting approximately 10 years of our Links and Libations event, which I believe the mayor and some members of the, of this council have been to before. We have also hosted the Minnetoka Summer Fest and serving the beer there, again, over the past probably six or seven years that I have been involved with the organization. It's a tremendous fundraising event for, for us, but I think the biggest part that we enjoy for the most part is that although we take in money from the, from the community, the best part obviously is the spending of the money, and the foundation does that. And anywhere from about $30,000 to $50,000 per year, we cycle through to various organizations, both 80% locally and about 20% internationally for clean water, for events that are sort of fit within the pillars of the, of the Rotary Foundation, clean water, education, women's issues, and those are probably the ones that come out the most. And we use that, we use this particular event as just being another small part to be able to cycle into our foundation. All, all of the people that will be serving have been trained with the various entities that provide liquor training organization. I did that before I came in today and re-upped my training and found that to be very valuable, and I'm certainly be willing to listen to any questions any of the council or anybody from the public has about our group, about this particular event.
Great, well, thank you very much, and thank you for the work that the, the Minnetoka Rotary does in our community. So, council, any questions that you'd like to raise?
Is there a time?
Yes, I believe it is 4:00 to 8:00 PM on the 8th.
Thank you.
Actually, on the, on the event flyer, it says, I hate to correct you, it says 5:00 to 7:00 PM. Is, 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 so, oh, does it? Okay.
I have one that says 4:00 to 8:00, Mayor.
The music is 5:00 to 7:00.
Okay, all right, well, yep.
I believe the piano and the music is 5:00 to 7:00.
Okay, there we go. Okay, well, thank you, and pardon my, pardon me for my incorrect correction. So, thank you. So 4:00 to 8:00 PM, great event, and I'd encourage everyone to attend, and, and tick, and do you have any information on tickets? You can buy tickets at the Marsh, correct?
I believe that the Marsh is the sponsoring event, Your Honor, and I, excuse me, Mayor, and the, that goes back to many years of being the mayor.
Listen, I've been called a lot of things, don't worry, not, not to worry.
And I believe they are available online, but also at the desk, I believe.
Okay, very good. Okay, well, we want to make sure people show up, and thank you for, for your service to the community, appreciate it.
Thank you.
All right, so, we, we have, oh, I have to close. Is there anyone else like to speak on this item? I will close the public hearing and bring it back to the council for comments or a motion. Councilmember Shaq?
Thank you, Mayor. I will make the motion to approve the temporary liquor license for the Rotary Foundation. Also, thank the city for giving the Rotary the opportunity, the folks at the Marsh, because it is such a great opportunity for the Rotary to fundraise. And I will also plug the Rotary, which meets on Wednesday mornings at the Marsh, 7:30. Community is welcome. It's always a very informative, lively group of people for 7:30, so come check us out. It's, it's really such a nice way to start your Wednesday.
Thank you, Councilmember Shaq. Anyone else like to make a comment or a second?
As I've heard, it's more fun than you want it to be.
That's right.
That's right. Well said. Is that a second, or?
That's a second.
All right, we've got a motion by Councilmember Shaq and a second by Councilmember Calvert. Are there any other comments that anyone would like to make on this item? Otherwise, Ms. Larson, would you please call roll?
Romailly?
Yes.
Coakley?
Yes.
Foster Bolton?
Yes.
Shaq?
Yes.
Wilburn?
Yes.
Calvert?
Yes.
We're some.
Yes, motion carries. Thank you. So, next item is item 14, Other Business, and we have one item. It is the ordinance establishing mayor and council salaries, everyone's favorite item. So, Ms. Doman, I believe that's your report.
Thank you, Mayor and council. This is my report. So this part is ordinance establishing mayor and council salaries. Staff recommendation is motion to adopt the ordinance. There are four options available, four votes needed. Again, for ordinance are included in the packet to reflect the four options. Financial consideration, the salary adjustment will take effect in, on January 1st, 2026, and has already been incorporated into 2026 preliminary budget. The amount, the exact amount will depend on the city council decision this evening. So some background, just to reflect on the last meeting as well, state law and the city charter require mayor and council salaries to be set by ordinance. Salary changes cannot take effect until after a municipal election following the ordinance of adoption, so the ordinance adoption has to occur before the election, but cannot take effect until thereafter. An ordinance was introduced on September 29th, 2025, I'm sorry, it's a typo, just past September, proposing salaries effective January 1st, 2026. Those proposed were the mayor at $25,850 annually, council members at $19,800 annually. The proposal was based off the November 4th, 2024 council study session consensus to match non-union employee increases. However, due to the limited adjustment methods, the proposal combines two years of non-union increases, so it lays out a 3% COLA, which backdates for both 2024 and 2025, and then up to a 2% market adjustment. During the introduction on September 29th, council discussed alternate options and methods for the salary increase, and we'll go through those options. Currently in 2025, the mayor and council salaries cost $141,000, which includes some benefits, some ancillary benefits, which are para or social security, Medicare, and then workers' comp contributions. Going through the options, option one was what I mentioned, as proposed during the introduction of ordinance, a 3% COLA, and then the two, up to 2% market. Again, that would hit the mayor at $25,850 annually, council members at $19,800 annually, and then a breakdown of the cost impact, that is a salary increase of $13,100. That is a salary increase of $13,150 across all council. And then with ancillary benefits, it is 7.29% of the salary, so that is an increase of $959. Again, that includes Medicare, para, social security, and workers' compensation. The total increase is $14,109 annually. Percentage of proposed 2026 general budget increase is 0.024%, and then percentage of the levy increase would be 0.323%. That is option one. Option two, this was brought forward during the council meeting in September, which would be aligning increases with the proposed 2026 levy, not to exceed the levy percentage. The preliminary levy is set at 7.892, which therefore I gave two options with this one, a 7% increase would result in an annual salary of the mayor at $25,145, council members at $19,260. The cost impact is $9,205 salaries annually. It does drop down to 671 of the other benefits that were mentioned for a total increase of $9,876, and listed there are the 26 budget impact and the levy impact. Another option would be to stay under that levy, would be a 7.5% increase. I'm calling that option 2B, was an ordinance option, at 7.5%, which brings the mayor to $25,262.50 annually, council members at $19,350. Again, a total cost increase would be $10,581.50, as well as the budget impacts on the levy, as well as the 2026 budget. Option three, this was mentioned during the September meeting as well, would be implementing the cost of living increase totaling 6% and removing the market increase. This results in annual salary for 2026 and 2027 at mayor $24,910, council members $19,080. Cost impact, the total cost impact, there would be $8,465. And then there is the 2026 budget at 0.014%, and then percentage of levy increase would be 0.194%. Again, option four would be maintaining the current annual salaries, of which currently today, the mayor is $23,500, council members are currently at $18,000. I did lay out the options in hopefully a more digestible way as the council discusses this. Option one, option two A, options two B, option three. Again, option four would be to maintain them as they are. During that September meeting at the council's request, it was asked to update this graph, which was brought forward last November. We did reach out to our peer cities, and we did update the graph with the data that was available, and here are the comparisons from the 10 metro area cities. St. Louis Park also has an election this year and is in a very similar process. Therefore, staff recommends motion to adopt an ordinance. Again, there are four listed, and then it does require four votes. And with Mayor, I'll turn it back to you.
Thank you, Ms. Doman. So, council, we've got four options. We need to make a decision. As I indicated previously, I don't really have a dog in this hunt, but at the same time, I invariably have an opinion, but I'm going to save that and let you all kind of share your thoughts, and hopefully we can develop pretty much of a consensus and get it done. So, councilmembers. Councilwoman Shaq.
Thank you, Mayor. I don't have a super strong opinion. My inclination would be somewhere in between 6% and 7%. I will say, you know, we've received exactly one comment about this from somebody who's pretty engaged and ardent about the budget, and his input was to go with the 10% because he believes it's such a difficult job and that the pay increase is deserved. That was meaningful to me because I don't think this particular resident pulls any punches when it comes to conversations about the budget, which I totally respect. So, I just want to reiterate that it's just really important to me that we honor the commitment we made to future councils to keep up with the pay, because it's really hard when it has to be a big leap, because councils have kicked the can down the road for a whole host of reasons, justifiable oftentimes, but I do think that we only have an opportunity to do it every two years. It's generally going to come in an election year, so, you know, it's always going to be a tougher decision for some people over others, but I would be inclined, I can support anything between, you know, option two, A, B, or three.
Councilmember Wilburn?
Sort of echoing what Councilmember Shaq was saying, I think that we need to, like, I wouldn't go with option four with no increase. I think we've made the commitment now to continue to do the increases so that it doesn't put a burden on future councils, and so that also we have a salary, again, no one is getting rich, but salaries that makes running for council an option for more people. I will say, like, when looking at the, there's not a lot of difference between any of these choices, the amount and the effect on the budget is very small, so I don't feel real strongly about it. I know it sounds, it sounds better to say, you know, we're doing a 7% increase or under the levy increase as opposed to a 10% increase, but when you look at the actual numbers, it's not, not that great of a difference, so I guess I could be persuaded to go with any of them except for no change.
Councilwoman Calvert.
Thank you, Mayor. As mentioned in the study session, there was a suggestion to try to stay somewhere under the levy increase amount, and that seemed sensible to me. And I agree that we made a commitment to try to make it easier for future candidates and future councils by not kicking the can down the road and making sure that future councils don't have to take up a difficult issue, because this is difficult and it is, you know, the difference may be negligible, however, it's real money, and I do think that I would be more comfortable staying under the levy increase amount, so, percentage. So, that's where I am, and I don't want to, I don't support option four. I'm sort of, knowing where the levy is, 7.5 seems like sort of a reasonable, sort of in the middle of the options that we have there.
Thank you, Councilwoman Calvert. Councilwoman Coakley.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm going to say what I always say. I'm not going to sugarcoat this. The reason why I've always supported the increases is because I think about people who, people of color who may want to run for office, and it takes a significant amount of time to run for office in our city and to serve in our city. And I talked to Mike about this earlier today, and I said, you know, for me to serve for the last six years and serve two terms, it was very difficult, very difficult. I gave up my life. I gave up an eight-to-five job to serve. When I ran, I made history. I'm the first person of color to serve in this city. I did that because it needed to be done, it was necessary. You know, it's a privilege to be able to serve, and, you know, I felt like it was needed, and so I did it. Was it easy? No. It has not been easy the last four years. Everybody know my situation and what I went through, and I still served. I could have said, you know what, I'm going to leave, I'm done, I'm going back to work, but I stuck it out. I went and got a job, an eight-to-five, and I continued to serve, and I continued to leave my daughter at home, you know, who's 17 years old, and now she's 17, so that's okay, but I think about people who may want to serve who are in my same situation, and this is not a lot of money, and to say that, you know, I really don't support it. I get it, because maybe people don't have, maybe people are in a situation where they have the privilege to be able to say that, but some people just don't have that opportunity. We know that people of color make less income, and for them to run and serve as a council member or even a mayor, it'd be very difficult. And so, I support option one, but if we can't get option one, I'll go with option two. But that is the reason why I'm saying it, and I'm going to continue to say it, I'm always going to say it, and, you know, but whatever, you know, we come up, what we vote on is what we will have, but that's the reason why, and I want to make sure that when I do lead the council, that we're in a position where people of color can run and can serve, and know that they'll be compensated, not full payment, because it's not full payment, but I can tell you, like I told Mike earlier today, we are putting in more than 20 hours a week, and you can put in 30 or 40 if you attend everything that you're invited to and you show up for everything, because trust me, I was going, when I didn't work at eight-to-five, I was showing up at a lot of places. I was showing up at homes, coffee shops, lunches, and all kinds of stuff, and then don't talk about the training and all of the other things. So, there's a lot of things that you can do to make your schedule full from eight-to-five almost with this being on the council, so that's why I support what I'm voting for.
Thank you, Councilwoman Coakley. Are there any other comments? You know, I mentioned, I don't really have a dog in this hunt, but I do have a sense of history on this, and I will say that the question that Councilmember Coakley raised has gotten quite a bit of discussion among mayors, because, you know, none of us is in this for the money, and it certainly, the highest salary on here is not enough to raise a family on or to support yourself. So, it's, I mean, I don't think any of us send the checks back, but it's not compensated like a regular job, and so there is a real service aspect to it, and as Councilmember Coakley indicated, you can be as busy in these jobs as you want to be. You can turn it into a 40-hour job pretty easily. So, you know, so the ask is greater than the compensation, but there are, you know, our salaries are competitive with peer cities. We need to bear that in mind. So, we need to make a decision, and I think that, you know, so I really want to leave that up to you, but if someone wants to make a motion, let's see if it lives or dies based upon the vote. And again, I think that what Councilwoman Calvert said about, you know, zero is not a good option, because then you force other councils later to play catch-up, and that's a very difficult thing to do politically. And, you know, relative to other cities, we're positioned quite well, but I'll tell you what, being, doing these jobs in Minnetoka is as or more demanding than most other cities, because Minnetoka's a regional leader, and we get involved in an awful lot of things. So, you know, whatever the choice is tonight, I will support. But if someone would like to make a motion, we'll take it from there and see what happens. Councilmember Foster Bolton.
I'll make a motion for option 2B.
2B, seven and a half percent. Is there a second for that? Councilwoman Calvert.
I'll second.
All right, we've got a motion for item, option 2B, by Councilmember Foster Bolton, the second by Councilwoman Calvert. Ms. Larson, would you call roll, please?
Remaley.
Yes.
Coakley.
No.
Foster Bolton.
Yes.
Shaq.
Yes.
Wilburn.
Yes.
Calvert.
Yes.
Weersom.
Yes, motion carries. Well, thank you all. Appreciate the honest conversation, and I think this is a good move, and like I said, I'd support whatever got voted, but I think this makes sense, and it is below the levy amount, and I think that that is positive, and I appreciate everyone sharing their opinion. So, let's see. Got to go to the right page. So, that's Other Business. So, finally, it takes us to Appointments and Reappointments, and we have a couple of appointments on the Economic Development Advisory Commission, EDAC, Chair and Vice Chair Appointments. And the recommendation is, I got to pull this up, is to, is, I have to make sure, excuse me, I want to get this, I want to get this right, because I appreciate people stepping up, and so bear with me one second. The nomination that I have made is to appoint Ann Duginsky-Sibolka as the Chair of the EDAC and David Haig as the Vice Chair of the EDAC. I spoke to both of them over the weekend. They are both interested and excited to perform those roles, and so that, I am making that motion. If someone would like to second, that would be great. Councilwoman Calvert.
Thank you, Mayor. I'll second.
All right. So, we've got a motion and a second, and do you have a comment?
I do have a comment. So, I am the liaison to the EDAC from the council, and I just want to say that Jay Hromatka is moving.
Has moved. Has moved.
Has moved. And he just has been such a thoughtful leader for many years, and the EDAC has a lot of wisdom. He asks great questions and has taught me a lot, and I just wanted to thank him for his service, and I'm very excited about Ann Duginsky-Sibolka stepping up, because she is also incredibly knowledgeable, makes great comments. I learned so much from her. I think she'll be just a wonderful chair, so thank you for the good nominations, and David Haig will be wonderful, too.
Great. Any other comments, anyone? I will say that I did receive an email from former Chair Hromatka, and I still have to respond to it yet, but he really did a great job, and he was in that role for a long time, and I know he's moved to a new location, but he really loved being part of the EDAC and really contributed a great deal. So, we've got a motion and a second. Ms. Larson, please call roll.
Remaley.
Yes.
Coakley.
Yes.
Foster Bolton.
Yes.
Shaq.
Yes.
Wilburn.
Yes.
Calvert.
Yes.
Weersom.
Yes, motion carries. So, that brings us to item 16, but just before we do that, you know, I just want to comment on the people who participate in our boards and commissions give a lot to the city. And while we just passed the, you know, very large salaries that the council gets, all of these volunteers, they work for nothing other than an occasional meal, and, you know, we owe them a significant debt of gratitude. They really honor the city and their roles, and we've never had a problem filling positions on our boards and commissions. We have residents who want to volunteer and contribute to our city, and we benefit from that, so I just wanted to throw in a word of thank you to all of the people who volunteer in the city to make Minnetoka and are subscribed to our commitment to excellence. We're very fortunate to have a very connected and involved electorate and residences. So, with that, I'm seeking a motion for adjournment. Councilmember Wilburn.
I move adjournment.
Is there a second? Councilwoman Calvert.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion by Councilmember Wilburn, a second by Councilwoman Calvert. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned.